Good evening and welcome. I'm Chris Ray, and I'm chairing this evening's meeting. And I'm going to call to order the November fourteenth, 2023 City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee. With me this evening are Councilmember Barbara D. Michelle and Deputy Council President Zach Hall. We have one item on the agenda today. It's ID fourteen fifty-five Sewer Master Plan Policy Discussion. The public, there is an opportunity for a public comment this evening, which is what we will, hold on a second, let me look at the agenda. We will start with public comment. There will be two opportunities this evening. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or if you'd like to make comments after the presentation, council question and answer period, tonight's agenda item. Members of the public may address the council at this time, either virtually in person, those who've signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If, do we have anybody joining us virtually?
Chair Ray, we do have some virtual attendees.
All right. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you're joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I'll ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. I am going to wait and see if anybody has signed up in the room.
Chair, no one has signed up prior to the meeting to speak.
Okay. Is anybody in the room interested in making public comment this evening? Seeing the room, seeing heads going side to side. So, Burke, anybody raising their hand online?
Chair Ray, I see no virtual hands raised among our online attendees.
Then we are going to move in through public comment, and we will move to approval of the minutes from September twelfth. And I'm going to do this. Is there any objection to approving the minutes from September twelfth as presented? Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, we're going to move into regular business then. We have one agenda item, as I noted, which is ID fourteen fifty-five, the Sewer Master Plan, and it is being presented this evening by Utilities Engineering Manager Matt Ellis. Welcome, Matt.
Good evening, councilmembers. Okay. Again, Matt Ellis, Utility Engineering Manager, and I'm here to talk about the Sewer Master Plan, specifically plans or policies and code revisions to chapter thirteen and sixteen. Tonight, we'll provide an update on the Sewer Master Plan and finalize our discussion on policy statements and code changes that are currently under development. And for the agenda, tonight, we'll talk about the timeline. Overview of the Comprehensive Master Plan and Sewer Master Plan Interface. Propose sewer-related comp plan goals and policies specifically related to onsite septic system and capacity protocol. Sewer master plan goals and policies. We'll discuss code red lines proposed to both IMC Title thirteen and sixteen thirty-eight Fats, Oils, and Grease regulations. I will briefly discuss the programs to support these policies, and finally revisit the capital improvement plan of projects that support policies, programs, and maintenance of our sanitary sewer system. The questions for council tonight? Does council agree with the proposed policy statements that will be included within the Comprehensive Master Plan? That will be included within the Sewer Master Plan? And does council agree with changes to Title thirteen and sixteen of the IMC? So, our timeline. As the master plan was being developed, the timeline is accepted, the timeline for acceptance and the outside stakeholder coordination was not fully understood. I apologize for any misinformation on this during past committee meetings, as I believe we could complete the majority of this work in twenty twenty-three. However, major milestones will require review of outside agencies, which can take months per week. Final acceptance of the Sewer Master Plan will occur in June twenty twenty-four. I will discuss our major milestones remaining for the Sewer Master Plan. We are near completion on the majority of city touches, with the exception of a community engagement event in March. So, in November, we'll finalize the review of the policies, codes, and programs to the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee tonight, and staff will complete the review of the draft Sewer Master Plan. In December, we'll address city reviewers' comments, submit the plan for inter-agency review, which will take about two months, and submit the plan to Ecology in King County for review, which can take up to four months. In March, we will receive and address comments from neighboring utilities, submit CIPA, which can take another two months, and have a public outreach event. In April, we will address the remaining comments from the community and neighboring jurisdictions. We will have one final review by MNI on the final draft. We'll then, in May, submit to King County for final approval and route to Ecology. And finally, in June, we will have adoption by the state and city council formally adopt the Sewer Master Plan. This slide shows how the Sewer Master Plan is situated within the city's structure of planning document. As we speak, our long-range planning department, with support from various departments, are working on the Comprehensive Master Plan. That provides overarching goals and policies within the city, highlighting priorities of council, community, and staff. This document provides the overarching documentation of priorities within the city and supports the city in applying for external funding and initiatives. The Comprehensive Master Plan presides over the master plans, of which the Sewer Master Plan is one. Sewer Master Plan accomplishes many things, including providing a current analysis of our system, projections of how growth will impact specific elements within the sanitary sewer system, documentation of connections, external stakeholder groups, and operations and maintenance practices and proposals for growth to support an ever-expanding sewer system. Among these initiatives, the Sewer Master Plan identifies specific sewer goals and policies to focus and direct items like code revisions, programs, and ultimately capital improvement projects. The Sewer Master Plan highlights the code revisions necessary to accomplish these goals and policies, and the programs needed to support these initiatives, and the projects necessary to maintain a suitable level of service for residents within the city. So, this slide shows a recap of previous discussions we had with mobility infrastructure relating to the Sewer Master Plan. On February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, we discussed onsite septic system management, including inspections for all onsite septic systems, tiered approach for extending sewer services, funding mechanisms for sewer extensions, and increased surface water sampling. On September twenty, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, we discussed maintaining sewer system capacity and fat, oil, and grease management, including inflow infiltration capacity improvement thresholds, developer capacity impacts, and applying requirements to existing establishments. Tonight, we'll discuss these items in more detail, as we have refined and addressed a lot of the concerns and gaps that we had at previous council committee meetings. We will elaborate on other policy items that were not brought before council at those times. So, here is the draft Comprehensive Master Plan policies proposed that specifically relate to the Sewer Master Plan. In the interest of time, I'm not going to elaborate on the justification for these newer revised policies, but please let me know if you want me to elaborate at any time as to why certain policies are proposed for the comp plan. The goal is to provide and maintain a sanitary sewer collection system that protects the public health and safety, the environment, and water quality, and ensure private systems are maintained and meet water quality standards. One of the policies is to provide sewer capacity to areas historically unsued that are at a risk of flooding or within or adjacent to environmentally sensitive areas.
Break in for a quick question. Yeah. Help number D. Michelle.
Thanks, Matt. For F three.
Yes.
Which is the monitoring, it does not specify how often that's going to be taking place, and I know we discussed this at one of the earlier meetings. I think it was the first time that you presented to us. We talked about what the schedule might be. Is that, is that yearly that people would have their septic systems monitor, or would that be on some other kind of schedule? And it doesn't appear to be specified in this statement.
That's a good point. So, in the Comprehensive Master Plan, we're going to make, we're having things very general in what we're proposing. And then when we get into the Sewer Master Plan, it's going to be a little more refined in terms of the policies. But what we are specifically talking about is a code revision. So, that is, this will be specifically outlined in code, chapter thirteen.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So, if, do you want me to read through these, or I can continue going through?
Keep, keep, keep on going.
Keep going, okay. So, here are the chapters of Sewer Master Plan. Tonight, we're primarily talking about regulations and policies, chapter four. And then we'll briefly touch on chapter ten, capital improvement. We define three objectives within the chapter four of the Sewer Master Plan. One, transition of onsite septic systems to city sewers, to the city sewer system. Objective two, maintaining sewer system capacity. And objective three, maintaining fats, oils, and grease. Shown here is the map of the city sewer system outlined by sewer drainage basin and main trunk lines. This is different than how the sewer system had been previously represented. This view helps staff identify both capacity concerns, critical assets, and connecting pipes, and how potential developments or extensions affect different branches or drainage basins of our city. So, we have four goals defined within the objectives mentioned earlier. Goal one is to provide and maintain a sanitary sewer collection system that protects public health and safety, the environment, and water quality. Goal two, provide adequate sewer capacity for current and future development within the city. Three, be responsible water stewards for future generations. And four, replace or reline all asbestos pipes within twenty years. This specific goal is managed by our sewer rehabilitation program, a specific capital improvement plan, and is the only goal with a direct and measurable outcome defined by CA program. So, the Sewer Master Plan has been consolidated into groups to identify specific needs and outcomes. Policies one through four discuss maintaining the sewer system by providing adequate level of service in servicing and maintaining the existing system, ensuring capacity for current and future needs, considering cost-effective alternatives and improvements, that was a recommendation from the Environmental Board, and providing sanitary sewer at a safe and responsible price. These are new policies, but promote the continued use and growth within our sewer system. Policy five was brought before Mobility Infrastructure and the Environmental Board in February. This policy protects the environmentally sensitive areas with goals of extending sewer to historically unsued neighborhoods in the times shown. Tier one is the hundred-year floodplain, shoreline buffer boundary, and commercial and industrial properties, and the goal is to extend sewer to these areas within twenty years. Tier two is stream buffers, wetland boundaries, and documented areas with high groundwater. The goal is to extend within thirty years. And then tier three is the CARA, the Critical Aquafor Recharge Area, one-to-ten-year wellhead capture zone, and the goal is to extend within forty years. And per discussion, the city would finance the extensions along city rideaway using sewer funds. Connection within the property would be the responsibility of the property owner.
Matt, just to clarify here really quickly, this is our plan to extend the sewer system to these areas?
That's correct.
We're not mandating anyone hook up to the sewer, and we're not mandating that anyone get off of their septic system if it's, if they don't want to.
As long as it's functioning properly.
Not failing, right?
Yep, yep. So, if it's working great, and we have in the code, we're defining how a system is working, functioning correctly, and we can have it documented by a dye test, but we'll get into that.
Okay.
But the main thing of the policy, yes, we are not forcing a connection, we're just providing the opportunity.
Great, thanks for the clarification.
Policy six was brought before Mobility Infrastructure and the Environmental Board in September. This policy clearly defines when main upsizing or investigation should be considered based on the amount of flow within a segmented, segment of a pipe during a design storm event. And there would be stringent requirements for shallow pipes, allowing surcharge up to the rim of a pipe, and lenient requirements for deeper pipes, allowing surcharging inside the manholes during a design storm. Policy seven is also new, that was brought before Mobility Infrastructure in September, regarding reducing and managing the amount of stormwater entering the sanitary sewer system. This policy proposes growth to pay for growth, requiring developers to evaluate contributions to the sewer system. And if projected demands impact capacity for the policy six, the developer would be required to contribute to upsizing the impacted portion of the sewer system. Policy eight is also new, that matches existing code and was brought forward to the Mobility Infrastructure Committee in September. During all grease-generated establishments have appropriately-sized grease interceptors, this policy matches the proposed policy within the comprehensive. And policies nine through fifteen are policies defined in the past Sewer Master Plan to be carried forward. These policies were in previous Comprehensive Master Plans. However, they were not, they're not in the current adopted version, so they would be brought back in, but in the master. Policies nine and ten allow single-family septic systems properly functioning to continue to use them, but require systems in failure to connect to the sewer system or repair their systems. Policy eleven states that side sewers shall be owned and maintained by the property owner, including the connection to the city main. Policy twelve identifies prioritizes and provides sufficient funding for capital improvement projects and programs that meet one of the following criteria: improve capacity for system growth, repair failing or deteriorated sewer lines, extend sewer lines into presently unsued areas, maintain appropriate levels of service, improve system operations, or minimize health hazards from contamination of ground or surface waters. Policy thirteen and fourteen promotes collaboration with King County and neighboring sewer providers to ensure adequate planning and evaluation on a local and regional level, including demands on wastewater treatment and conveyance. And policy fifteen proposes termination of a domestic water service to the subject property if the property owner fails to meet the sewer connection policy or pay utility charges. To support the policies shown within this document, and as discussed in past discussions with the Environmental Board and Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, certain code revisions are proposed to Title thirteen. The changes include revise sewer connection requirements from the edge of property to two hundred feet to the structure being served, and septic systems not permitted for new commercial properties over residential use within areas of environmental concern. And the purpose of the change is to be a more proactive approach for sewer connections in line with neighboring jurisdictions, and reduces the impact to environmentally sensitive areas. And for the first part, about the two hundred feet to structures served, in some instances, it makes the requirement more strict, including for small properties located within two hundred feet of the sewer main. However, properties, provides clarity for larger properties, where the property may currently lie adjacent to sewer, but the structure served is located over two hundred feet away. And this is the case for a number of larger properties along SR nine hundred. This requires connection instead of septic system major repair or replacement if sewer, if sewer is available and the system is within an environmentally sensitive. Redline code, this update definitions related to septic failure, dye testing, maintenance requirements, and repair definitions and inspection protocol. The proposal of the change is to be consistent with the King County Board of Health definitions, clarify what a septic system failure is, what fixes are allowed, and who can do the fix. Hopefully, this will reduce confusion and conflict about when a system is classified as in failure. Clarify when a septic system needs to be replaced or repaired, and what types of repairs are required, and clarify roles and responsibilities, and provide clear definitions that were not present in the existing code. Impact of the change, property owners understand when their septic system is defined as being in failure and the resulting process for repair or replacement. The only change from the definition for failure defined in the King County Board of Health for failure is to provide proof of the dye test. This is actually a less strict protocol than what's shown in the King County Board of Health, as proof of failure is required via dye test. If an inspector determines the system isn't functioning, the property owner is allowed to do a dye test to determine if downstream impacts will occur. If dye isn't visible, repair isn't required as quickly as if dye is visible at ground surface or a downstream surface water body. Onsite septic inspections, the purpose requires all properties on septic to maintain and perform recurring inspections, and this is based on the type of septic system that is installed. So, pump systems are different than a gravity system, and it has a different intervals. But there's a table in Title thirteen that will be included that shows that, and it is per Department of Health requirement, with no changes. The impact is added cost for inspection by homeowners who don't currently have their systems inspected, but reduces potential contamination. We will also do, propose revisions to sewer connection waiver requirements, violation and penalty connection as soon as possible where determined required, and failure to comply will be referred to code enforcement. Purpose of the change is to allow use of existing septic systems as long as functional and outside of environmentally sensitive areas, and defines when a correction or connection is required. Impact of the change defines when a repair is allowed and continued use of a functioning septic system is in good standing, and it defines when connection to a city sewer system is required. In addition to the revisions to Title thirteen, to support the policies regarding fats, oils, and grease, we're proposing revisions to Title sixteen as well. This was brought before Mobility Infrastructure in September. This is a, we were proposing a retroactive clause for grease interceptor installation. The purpose of the change is to require existing business owners to actively manage outfall to sewer in line with other business establishments in the city. This requires existing businesses who don't currently have a grease interceptor to install one within three years. This will be a financial impact to existing businesses, owners who don't have grease interceptors installed and are discharging grease, fats, and oils to their sewer system, but reduces potential sewer backups and other environmentally, environmental contamination issues for sewer And, city has a number of programs associated with the Sewer Master Plan to support these plans and policies and code revisions. One is our stream sampling to identify fecal coliform contamination. This is the new program to look at the health of our streams and see if contamination is occurring around the neighborhoods that are still on septic. We also have our sewer inspection program. This is being performed by our operations department. With the purchase of a new CCTV van, staff have begun systematically inspecting pipes within the city. This leads to new operational repairs and new CIP lining projects to reduce infiltration and intrusion and breaks in our system. And then we also have an infiltration, inflow and infiltration investigation program that occurs periodically and is our investigation process if we suspect excessive INI in our system, include smoke testing and video inspection. And then finally, our fog inspection and education program. The program aids in the prevention of sanitary sewer blockages due to fog discharging to our sanitary sewer system, provides educational materials and technical assistance to approximately one hundred and forty food service restaurants. Restaurants are required to follow a maintenance schedule for grease traps and interceptors, perform kitchen management practices, and train kitchen staff and report out annually. This program provides documentation to the, of these practices to the city annually, and restaurants and fog-producing facilities are inspected on average every three years and more often if needed. The CIP was, finally, the sewer, the CIP was adopted for the completion of the master plan. We identified environmentally sensitive areas to evaluate. We included select sewer extensions based on past Environmental Board and Mobility and Infrastructure discussions. We included selects, we included areas of high surcharging to be included in the CIP to investigate and alleviate. And here is the capital improvement projects based on the next six years. That includes Upper Sycamore Extension, Sewer Rehabilitation Program, Highlands Lift Station Improvements, South Newport and Wildwood Sewer Remediation, and Highlands Infiltration Intrusion Repair. So, the next steps, collect and respond to comments on the draft plan in Q four, twenty twenty-three through Q one of twenty twenty-four, submit a draft plan to the state and county's reviews in twenty twenty, at the end of this year, conduct CIPA and public comment in the beginning of next year, and seek city council approval of the plan, and submit the final plan for state and county's approval by Q two of twenty twenty-four. The filing direction, does council agree with the proposed policy statements to be included within the Comprehensive Master Plan and to be included within the Sewer Master Plan? And does the council agree with the changes to Title thirteen and sixteen to implement these plans?
Thanks. Any questions for Matt? Deputy Council President, you're up.
Thank you very much for the presentation. First, just going back to in March of next year, that public outreach event is around the same time as when we submit CIPA. The event isn't our public comment period, is it? Or is that a separate event?
It will be. So, we're only obligated through CIPA to provide public outreach, but we figured it would be better to actually have a actual event provide people the ability to comment instead of just sending out the report for people to review.
Okay. We'll have that event, but there'll also, I assume, be some pathway to, for public comment outside of that event.
That is correct.
I guess, starting with the comp plan policy updates, one of them, policy F two is about preventing future septic in commercial developments, and then also for residential areas within environmentally sensitive areas. So, is that, are those two different things, or is it commercial areas in environmentally sensitive areas, or is it all?
Sorry, this is all commercial.
All commercial.
We're trying to get rid of them all in commercial.
Okay, thank you. And then for the Sewer Master Plan policies, policy four was about developing those feasible and cost-effective collection system alternatives. Is that the right, we're, we're not developing alternatives, are we?
No. So, I think it's one, we can listen to developer extensions if there are some alternatives out there. We just don't want to be closed-minded about what options are available, or if consultant does develop something that isn't something that we've typically used, we can at least look at those options. So, we're, we're looking outside of the box, basically, why we have that.
I might consider, I could save that for a comment later, but I might change that to be like, consider feasible and cost-effective alternative or something, because just my, my first reading of that was that the city would be developing some alternative, which I didn't. Oh, also, I found through the MSRC, that's Municipal Services and Research Center, is that right? Our two thousand and two plan is there for Sewer Master Plans, but I was able to find a couple other ones that were recently updated, too. The Olympia Plan is really awesome, by the way, but they had some policies around providing technical assistance and public education regarding conversion, and then also one around investigating odor complaints and addressing odor complaints if that's necessary. I just wanted to ask if you thought those, number one, show up in our community, or number two, would those be helpful to add as policy?
That's a good question. I will definitely take a look at that.
And then, definitely interested in the Environmental Board's conversation about essentially what happens if we don't, if it's cost prohibitive to have the sewer extensions. So, the comment there was that staff was investigating that. And I couldn't figure out if that was from when that conversation was happening, or if that's updated. So, are we still investigating what alternatives to that would look like, or have we had some more time?
I think we've looked at a few of the locations to make sure that there isn't a major roadblock, but not all the locations have been verified.
I just have a couple, and they're really easy ones. So, a lot of our, our policies are really driven by and based on King County's Board of Health direction and guidance.
The code revisions are.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And then, one of the things you mentioned as next step is to collect and respond to comments on the draft plan. What is the process that we're using to solicit and collect comments and input externally?
That is an excellent question. My consultant is... My consultant is managing that portion of it, so I don't have that in.
That was a punt, right?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, and we don't have to do it here, but when you guys do get it together, or at least send it out to the committee, an email would be fine, but I think everybody would like to know kind of how that's going to be handled. Okay? You don't have, you're good? All right. Well, as I mentioned earlier, we would, we'd take a break or a pause here for public comment. If there's anybody in the room who is interested in public comment after Matt's fantastic presentation? I don't know if I can do that, but I'll answer it. Yeah. Nope. Oh. Yeah, you really do have to come up. Generally, we don't do questions, but you know, today's a pretty special day, so we're doing questions today.
Okay, so question.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you please state your name for the record?
Sure. Katie Cannon. So you had mentioned the Upper Sycamore Extension, and where exactly would that run? I mean, and I guess the reason I ask this, and we could talk about this later if this is too specific, but I live very close to an existing sewer, well, my lot, the edge of my lot, my house is way on the other side. I'm not sure how far 200 feet actually is. And the, where the sewage exits our house currently is on the very far side of our house. And to get to the existing line, we would have to trench through a bunch of like, really old fabulous trees. So I just wonder what kind of like balance is being taken into account for people with situations like that? Because I wouldn't think you want to wipe out trees just to, you know, tunnel into sewer.
No, I mean, I think our goal is to make sure that we work with every property owner that we can. Again, we're not forcing the extension, connection, we're providing the opportunity, and only in areas where that's, you know, risk of flooding is high, so right next to the creek. It's not going to be higher up on the hillside. That would be on the residents to decide if they want to connect.
Great, thanks, Matt. Anyone else? Well, step on up, state your name, and then what we may do is just have Matt get back to you offline too.
Okay. My name's Sunny Wong. You're talking about grease trap, you know, it's a requirement you're forced by city or its quarter for the old establishment or the new establishment.
Yes, that's correct, yes.
For all within three year?
Yes, so all new establishments are required to have grease.
The new one, right?
Yes.
What happened to the old one?
That's what the new, the retroactive clause we're proposing would be to require.
Even they had the grandfather, you know?
Correct.
They still have to install it new.
That's correct.
Within three year.
Within three years.
Who's the funding coming from? Can the city, you know, got the fund to apply for, to help? The funding?
We can speak offline about that.
Yeah, that's, that one, yeah, take that offline, Matt, that would be great.
See, like, I run like a restaurant, you know, but I try to put an install, you know, grease trap in there, but the city wanted me to put all of the grease trap, you know, outside and parking lot instead of inside a restaurant.
That's definitely touched base offline, I think.
Yeah, see, but, see, you know how much it costs, you know, see, that's why, you know, city support, you know, like, funding for the, for the food estimate, you know, for the funding from the city to help.
Yeah, why don't you get your, Matt, get the contact info and then follow up offline, that would be great. Thank you.
Uh-huh, yeah.
All right. City Clerk, anybody online indicating interest in making comment?
Chair Ray, I see no virtual hands raised at this time.
All right, let's go into those, a couple of questions we have from the administration. So does the council agree with the proposed policy statement, and do we agree with the proposed changes to Title 13 and 16? Councilmember De Michelle, you want to go first?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Matt, for the, this has been a really interesting process to see how the original proposals have developed over time, and also to understand what a long process we still have to go until these are approved. But yes, generally, I support what you're, what you're proposing to do. I had very similar, my only question or concern would be, you know, how are we notifying people about the need for inspections and monitoring? And the other one is restaurant owners that are impacted by the fog requirements. And so, and I'm sure that that will be worked out, that's, that's not really in the scope of the code or anything else, but as a city, we want to be sure that we're treating our property owners and our restaurant owners and so forth, so that they can plan when they're going to be able to comply. So that would be my only concern. There was something in the full documents that you sent us about mobile, it doesn't really say mobile food trucks, and I wasn't quite sure. I don't know if you want to clarify that for me, but I was just wondering, are they going to be subject to the same grease, what do you call that, detention systems? And how would we monitor that? And the, what I was reading did not say food trucks, so I wasn't even sure that we were talking about mobile food providers. But that was a very small item, and you can get back to me at some other time if you want to. Yeah, and we could talk about, about it because it's a very small item, you know, large package, so.
We have talked about that one specifically. So that originally was going to be on the docket to be included in a code revision. It did include mobile food vendors such as food truck. And it wasn't the grease trap, but it was at least having a grease management plan. So maybe a mobile grease interceptor or way that they weren't, to verify they weren't discharging directly to the storm system, but were discharging to sewer. Right now, we don't have capacity in a staff level, staffing level to manage another program. We wanted to put it in policy, so that way we have the opportunity in the future to manage it once we, you know, as we continue to grow. So we wanted to make sure it was a priority, but we don't have a system in place, a program to really identify it yet.
Okay, thank you. Would that be something like the King County Health Department when they go out and do inspections, like for seven days? And we know all about that at Quanis. So is that something that we could get King County to do the monitoring for us, or through the public health inspectors, or is it something that, if we set the policy, we have to do the monitoring of it as well?
That's a good question. It is being discussed on a regional level, that was another reason why it's been tabled, because a lot of the cities are trying to figure out what to do with, with mobile vendors, like even coffee shops and, and, yeah, food trucks that just come in the city and come back out. So we don't have a great answer yet for it, but it would most likely fall on city staff to do the program in whatever form that, that shapes out to be. But we're really just focused on at least having a policy in place that we can manage it in the future and be proactive and at least seeing that as an important step that we want to do.
I really appreciate that approach. Thank you so much. And again, what you've come here with tonight, yes, I agree with all of the proposed changes. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Deputy Council President, any thoughts?
Sure, just to say, yes, I think the policies for the comp plan and for the sewer master plan are well-written and meet all of the goals that were laid out. I also think that the changes to IMC 13 and 16, right? Yep, seem also in that same space. I do think that there's lots of concerns though around costs, so wherever costs exist, number one, and it seems like that's already being done and showing up in many of the policies here, or at least in the Environmental Board discussion too, trying to find opportunities for grants that we can connect people with is important. I don't know if the city has ever considered putting aside a small fund or a matching fund for homeowners to be able to apply for, for some of these kind of big-ticket conversions. I don't know necessarily how I've fallen that, the city can't, can't assist with every requirement that we give out in the community, and that's just part of our role as a city government too. But it might be something the administration considers, and maybe we'll have a conversation about that down the line as well. And then I do think that it, we could benefit from adding something about technical assistance. You know, we provide businesses that kind of technical assistance to connect them with resources in the region as needed. It seems like maybe calling out a policy around technical assistance for homeowners to be able to understand who in the market can help them make these kinds of conversions if they want to as well. And then, public education, potentially those two things, adding those policies as well. But otherwise, I thought you did a good job with the policies and everyone else who helped out with you there, thank you very much. And thank you for capturing public comment so thoroughly from all the steps that we've had along the process and also the long narrative of the Environmental Board conversation. So very helpful.
Great. I think I'll answer the question first. I think the policies are fine, but I did want to just do one editorial here. It's around the few things that historians say have really enabled human beings to civilize, and one of them is the sanitary sewer. And I think we take it for granted, but it is one of the most significant things from both a civilization, but from a public health perspective, maintaining a working, integral sewer system is so important. So I appreciate that we're trying to get ahead of this. I recognize there's, there's things that we're going to ask people to do so that we can maintain that sewer system, but I really appreciate the work that you all have put into making this come together. So thank you. We've still got a little bit of road ahead of us before we can approve this, but I'm anxious to see what feedback we get from, from the public, from, from King County, and then ultimately from the Department of Ecology. Do we need to do anything with this at this time, or is this now, you've got kind of direction from us, and now it's, it's taking those next steps forward into the, this quarter and into next year with the larger approvals? Is that where we're going?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so we're, we're not bringing this back to the full council until sometime June timeframe?
That's correct. The goal is to have it for the formal adoption.
All right. All right, well, as always, Matt, thank you very much, appreciate the information. So that was our one agenda item, so we have, next on the agenda is announcements, any announcements? No? All right, adjourned at 7:13 this evening. Thank you all, thank you all for coming, we appreciate you being here.